There we go. Yeah, I need that. The call, I pushed go and I didn't look. Hey stranger. We would rather have you late than not there at all.
And it's six o'clock, so. Still. Still on my. All right, without a call meeting the order. I will dispense with the pledge unless there's an objection. And proceed now, assuming you have the role now.
Yeah, I thought she set one up, but. Okay, the house of law.
All right. So we'll move on to approving this evening's agenda. Motion to remove in a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Old business.
We're just gonna go down real slow of updates for you guys.
Absolutely, the cheapest change order yet.
Yeah.
That's for you, that's for you.
Donna, this is the late birthday present. Yeah, and this is just because of the um. The day of occupancy. For those of you that have been involved, the do the two disconnects that the state electrical inspector required, we have a change order for our late. Clay was finally able to nail down a. Delivery time without that, this change order wouldn't have gotten approved by USDA. Believe it or not. So we had to track that one down, so that's just to push the date. Do the delivery. That's not stopping other subs from also working on the project right now. So I'm just here to give you guys that information and see if you have any questions. Mike, you got anything to add on them?
We're eating it now. Would be one question.
Ah, yeah, I don't know. It's it's set up with. Small heaters from contractors are still running off that before they fire up the main boiler system for the inquiry.
So I still have time before I call the team?
We built a thing. I checked it. Sitting at seventy-five percent.
Maybe that's.
I couldn't remember either.
Maybe all your pre-buy went over there.
Either that or the. Gauge doesn't work, but it's sitting at seventy-five percent when I looked at it on Friday.
I'm just gonna make a note to check back, cause I don't think we got bill parted. Maybe the contractors.
The price of propane keep it all.
What? Sure, it's a. Seriously? Seriously, the one year we pre-buy. At least me personally. Um, the downtown redevelopment project, I I really don't have anything to update, I'm still working on trying to get their title. On with the title commitment from the purchasing. From the purchaser, there's one. One hang up with an old federal lien from the previous owner that had thirty-two main that's still showing up on the title commitments. So the city attorney and myself are looking on. Trying to get that off, but we don't know how it is still on there after four years was taken over in two thousand twenty-one, it should have. Been long gone, but the IRS hasn't caught up to us for some reason, so. Trying to do some paperwork to try to get rid of that so that we can go on for title. Wish people would just file their taxes and. Any questions?
Pay your taxes and don't get light bulbs.
And don't get light bulbs, yeah.
Yep.
Um, I don't have anything new to report in the library.
I haven't heard anything either.
Okay.
That they're looking or. I'm sure they're still actively looking, but I'm also sure it's probably slowed down a little bit.
You want me to keep this on the whole business?
Yeah, I think so. Make some overtime. I can talk with Miriam sometime before. The next.
Work session.
Work session.
Thanks, sounds good. On the limited DMV is moving along, we received. The deposit tickets and. The account number for the. Account that the state opened up at Duro Bank and blocked up for us to make the deposits to. They are in the process of ordering or placing or putting our inventory together, placing that. My liaison from Park Rapids is on vacation until the twenty-ninth, when she gets back, I'll know better. Timeline, but it's looking very close to first part of February. But her boss is recommending we don't. Make a real public splash because there's gonna be such a learning curve that worried about us. You know, having.
Overwhelmed.
Being overwhelmed. They want us to wait a few months afterwards, so we're, Paige and I are still proceeding to train in the sandbox and do what we need to, we ordered a couple extra. Literature sorters to put in the safe for the plates. And to go into the one storage cabinet for all the. Tab stickers. I think I told you guys last time, the scanner was ordered and that came in. And.
The plates are new in February, I should probably just go for this.
I probably will recommend, cause I, every time I tell somebody that I think it's gonna happen this month, you know, I'm I'm I'm, you know. Waiting on the state, basically, I've I've started working on what the funds are gonna look like, or excuse me, what the account codes are gonna look like in. The way we do our daily paperwork. But. Yeah, until I, until I see and get an email. In my system and then drive that says your order is placed and it's on the way. I'm still gonna wait. So making big splash about it. The city of Black Tech annexation process, Joe ran into a slight snag. But we got it figured out with the Office of Administrative Hearings. And that was due in part to when the overflow parking lot went in at the landing back in ninety-eight. There was some deeded parcels back and forth to the DNR to Mendoc or the acquisition of that property. And that was left out of one of the original Russell descriptions in the resolution. So I, by Joe's recommendation, I made the changes to that. Language on the parcel descriptions and sent it back to him. And the Office of the the OSA said that that was fine. So he's submitting that and hopefully there will be no other problems with that, but they have it right now and Joe's just waiting to hear a hearing date. The FEMA disaster, I've got weekly Friday meetings right now with our rep from FEMA. Going through some of the. Disasters that we already declared, we were at a hundred percent doing part things that we could do to fix and replace. Right away after the disaster happened last April. In order for us to get reimbursed, so I've got some time cards and invoices for materials. And hourly wages from the time of the incidents originally that I need to go through and file with FEMA. So that those projects are done, they keep asking me every couple of weeks if things like our culverts and those sections that we need to know like. Overall sizes of areas that need to have more material put in them. Are clear of snow and ice to take pictures? And I keep telling them, no, it's winter. Don't expect that till April or May. But they ask.
Isn't there only a, isn't there a FEMA office?
Yeah, there is, and and you know, all the reps are all over the United States, but it's it's up to them to ask, I mean. One of the things I under- I understand a little differently is one of the reasons for those pictures is they call, they do what's called a. A tabletop inspection when things are covered in snow and like if you are an entity that needs the money now. To make those repairs, they do this tabletop inspection where you can provide them as much information as possible with pictures. And they'll. Forward you the money sooner if your entity doesn't have it, and they explain to the. Reps that, you know, the council is in favor of getting this done, put some money into the twenty-three budget so that it could get taken care of when we're able to and. We're okay funding wise and. We're okay with that. They're more of on an emergency basis. Questions about that? Um. The co-op rail bank land conveyance, I had a Zoom meeting two Fridays ago with the state. The co-op and all the state legal team including. Shots go from the local area trails and waterways. And our attorney just to see where we were at with the process and that was shortly after. The meeting that you guys approved the exhibit and I sent the letter off, so right now their legal team is looking at the exhibit and putting together. An independent market evaluation of what the value of the property is. Once that's completed, which can take up to six, six months. We'll know a little bit more as to what amount of money needs to go into escrow. For the purchase between the co-op and the state. So I probably won't know much until early summer. But we have another follow-up teams meeting in April. That's right, it's either March or April, I believe it's April. But everybody agreed the exhibit looks fine. I know shots go is a little concerned about traffic in that area where the. The easement to cross over the rail bank is going to be with ATB and Snowville traffic. And he's gonna look on his side about, you know, some additional. Finage that might need to happen, so there's no. Intersection issues when those. Egg trucks going across the rail bank. And he's gonna get back to the the group when we have the next two season until.
I see you included the proposal for.
The local sales tax option?
Yeah.
Yep, so I got those out to all of the committee members for the tax. Committee on our Friday of last week. And including Representative Matt Bliss and Steve Green also received a copy and then those got in the mail as well, so those are out. With the updated numbers.
Yeah, I was gonna say the numbers are.
Yeah, the numbers have changed. In addition to everybody else's.
Slightly.
Right. Letter I is a draft of your RFP for engineering services. I don't really wanna read it with you guys, but if you did go through it. Since I sent it out, so have any points you'd rather make on top of that? I can most certainly. Get it out on like the league's websites by weeks and or months and any other revisions that are needed.
How is this distributed to potential vendors?
Typically, I use the league's website, you can advertise on there, so that way it gets out there at a state level. You don't typically put it in the paper. These engineering service companies are always looking on the league's website and state websites for these. And there's so many of them that they end up getting shares, so like Minnesota Rural Water, you have an opportunity to put it on their website. I'm trying to think where else I would have done it. There's another one, can't remember. And we got, when we did it for the city attorney, we got some decent traction, I believe, so. And they don't charge you to do it, and it's fairly large shock to them, so. We can put it on our website. Or something in the paper that's small. Directing them to our website as well for further information.
So anyone could propose anywhere in the state?
Yes. That's how we ended up getting Joe Wango. Our original attorney that we severed. Contract with when Joe started was in International Falls at the time. And chosen in fall. It's pretty boilerplate. The RFP is. I asked for some recommendations from a couple of my colleagues in Fergus and. Detroit Lakes and that area. I got about four or five of them into compare and. They were all pretty the same for what I did differently is instead of just giving them. An idea of what our city has to offer in terms of services, I went a step further and provided a listing of. Current and ongoing projects. They can see what type of activity we have been working with and what we're hoping to do, especially the local option sales tax proposal. That might actually need to get us a little bit more traction on it. Additionally, I did talk with Tim Robert from with Seth about this. I'm a big believer in giving people the heads up, I don't like throwing people into the bus, so I had told him because. He had come to. Town in November. And had a meeting with Max and myself, and I felt it. My due diligence to let them know, I'll give them a heads up that the council's asked for this to go out. It's pretty standard, he'll just happens, but that gives them the opportunity to know that they will be bidding for it again. Okay. Tim is. Going to, he's asked for some time on your February sixth agenda, he's gonna come introduce himself and. Talk about with Seth a little bit with the whole board.
Sounds good.
So if you guys have other things you wanna change or add.
I don't.
Okay.
Pretty good.
You got it was good too, okay, then I'll go with what I did. Um, our old duck. So I sent out an email to Johnson Conservation. Asked him to provide a, told him that the council was interested in having him up here in the spring and to please provide me with. Like an agreement or some type of services. Contract of some sort so that we knew what to expect when he came, I haven't heard back from him yet, but in addition to, I already have. A drafted. Bill Tramie electric roundup grant for those costs. Potentially anywhere from eleven to fifteen hundred dollars. I'm expecting in services, so I started that last week, I'm gonna wait and see if I hear from. Jensen. Prior to finishing it off and submitting it to Roundup, because if I can get something a little bit more substantial in terms of. Costs other than what we're anticipating, you know, mileage rate and hotel would cost us. I can narrow down that budget and the grant proposal a little bit closer. I did go one step further in the grant proposal and kind of explained to Roundup that this is a, this is. Not the end, this is just the beginning, that, you know, we're gonna try to partner with the history center and. Try to find a way, once we know what we're actually looking at that the duck needs repairs for, that there might be some additional fundraising, some community. Fundraisers or other types of grants that might need to gather in order to get him back. And that's all I've got for old business.
Old business.
Okay. So Julie Jolson's gonna be here at the February sixth meeting, her and a couple of partners and their spouses are doing an ice fishing derby for the kids. In March, yeah, on March fifth. And we've already started helping them do a little advertising for it, but they are looking for whatever. That the community can help them fundraise. They're gonna do, you know, some giveaways, kinda like how the Northones Ice Fishing Tournament goes. I I know that they're also going after the Fire Relief Association for some help. And they've already talked to a lot of other businesses in town, I imagine, because Carl and Diane Adams. Or Timberline are also part of the organization of this, that their business I'm sure will support every portion of this, so. Provided our previous conversation on twenty-two about cash donations, I just want the board to keep that in mind as to. Maybe have some questions for Julie when she comes in February to see, you know, what have you got and what kind of commitments do you have, what do, what are your needs? Because they've never done it before, they don't really know what to expect. My guess is manpower.
And they didn't put any home to.
Precisely.
There was a. There was a big thing on Facebook today, I think I read it today. About all these people that donated. For this, uh, somebody's making fishing lure.
Oh, yeah, I saw that too, I did.
About all the people that donated.
Wow.
Money for.
And they're donating money to him and he's making kits for the kids, right? Yeah.
Classes for all the kids that come to it.
Yep.
So there was quite a long list of. People that donated.
You can be drinking by drink.
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah, so that was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
A lot of people donated money for bikes and. I read that yesterday.
I think the lumberyard or something else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So just, you know, maybe keep that in mind, you know. They don't know what they're gonna expect. You know, how many kids are gonna get, it's kinda like when Tony started going on the snow, we really didn't know what kind of a. What kind of a draw it was gonna have. I know that they have one in Swan Lake every year, Northone does one.
It will greatly depend on what your weather's doing in March.
Absolutely. They have huge partnership with the Snowville Club, they're gonna, or it's the weekend after the drag, so they're already. Committed to keeping the snow cleared off the ice for them, they're gonna have an area, so. You know, there's, there's not a lot of. Manpower we need for that. So it sounds like they've got a lot of resources already, so. And then the last thing I have for old business is a proposal from Corn Main. So some of you guys might understand our meter reading software and the radios and handheld that we use to read our meters. Were put in in like the two thousand ten timeframe, we bonded with Minnesota Rural Water. To buy all the meters, put them in or and the radios, excuse me, the radios and have them all installed and handheld. Since two thousand nineteen, I have. Reestablished the IT contract with the company Census that supports the software program that helps us read everybody's meters. And I've been able to maintain that since, the current handheld that I have when purchased was about eleven thousand dollars. And right now its replacement is somewhere around eight, I have. Been able to work with Corn Main. The going forward, the software is because Windows ten is out now and everything is app-enabled, the software is only app-enabled and what this unit has right now is Windows six point one. And it's not compatible going forward with updates starting to get. To the point where it's a dinosaur and I am not a. And it's aging out, so I'm looking for a suitable replacement. This proposal will provide us with a new handheld, a new, what they call is a command link, it's basically a handheld Bluetooth link. That links the radio. To the handhelds, so when Mike does his drive-through count, it picks up everybody's meters and then a new base station for the handheld. This is still significantly less than buying a brand-new census one. But. It's also a little bit more than what I originally budgeted for the last two years. We thought, when Mike and I were throwing budgets around, we thought maybe. Couple thousand dollars. So I'm pushing more towards. Is it five? Yeah, fifty-two, twenty-three. But this one will do everything I need it to without having to worry about it being. Not backwards compatible, because we do have a lot of radios that Mike is still switching out with new. Parts, because when all those radios were put in a dozen years ago. The batteries that were in them basically have a ten-year life. So we have a lot of people's radios that aren't communicating right now and Mike is having to drive around into. You know, manual reads. And that for the last two years, that list has grown from like six. To about a dozen. And it's only gonna continue, so he's been ordering replacement radios for these locations, but they're gonna continue to happen. Unfortunately, a lot of these radios also, their software is brand new and the way they're programmed. At some point, this handheld's not gonna be able to pick up that that reading. So as a. A convenience, but also this is how we read meters, I need to improve. The hardware. And this is what I would recommend we replace with.
See, so moving forward, this is what's gonna lead the the newest out too.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Correct. Yep, the last week and a half. Mike and I have been battling, he's got these new Omni two, Omni plus. Omni plus. Radios and he was able to put one in one building that was larger volume. Reader for meter and then he went and put one in another place and that one didn't work and we couldn't figure out why and I've been working with Census and Shadow and Corn Main. Figured out that it's just the way it's programmed, so there's few of them that are programmed a different way and our handheld wouldn't. Link with them, so we couldn't read that meter. So we've got some bugs we also need to work with, but those can be misprogrammed, but yes, to answer your question, Dawn. It'll continue to read the new meters too and all the old ones until they need to be replaced.
When the battery has a ten-year lifespan, you have to replace the whole radio, you don't just open it up and burn the battery?
Some of them, yes. Lot of them, no. Mike can explain it a little bit more in detail.
You got two different things, when Chris Cena talks radio, you have to actually be out in the field to know the difference here. Some of the meters, like your residential house meters. They have an actual radio unit on it, meter comes out with line. But then on these bigger ones where we get, you know, inch and a half meter, two-inch meter. The actual. Part that reads the water itself is battery powered on that, so what we have to do is we have to take the internals out of the meter. And replace that, that's battery operated. Then the line comes out of that, goes to the radio unit on the wall that has a battery in that as well.
That's right.
So those two different things. Ten years.
Yep.
On the battery.
Yep, and this is kind of a learning. As well, I mean, when I started in two thousand fourteen, the system was only. Four years old and now we're at its age limit and we didn't really understand when things stopped reading. What was really going on until Mike got in and realized that batteries needed to be replaced, so he ordered a bunch of batteries. And then there was other things that were still weren't working, so. It's been a learning curve because there's a portion of our utility software. On the backside. That helps these read, these meters. Communicate so we can pull everybody's readings. And in order for us globally to budget right. And know how much water we're we're charging and everything, it's really imperative that we get accurate reads for everybody that's using water. Without that communication estimating. You know, relying on the customer to tell us what the reading really is. You know, relying on the customer to tell us what the reading really is, is not the best. Line of action and that's why the city went to this in the first place, time as well as convenience.
So for residential, it sounds like the, there's just a battery in the radio transmitter up above. Not in meter, is that right?
Correct.
Smaller meters than the larger ones have a battery in both.
Well, that's changing too. They, they change everything, it's. Different, your vehicles and everything, technology changes every couple of years and then you're just. S O L to fall in line, get with the new technology and that's all there is to it.
But this way, in two thousand nineteen, I need a new battery for this handheld we have right now. And I ordered two of them, they were a hundred and fifty bucks a piece, it's a three-point-six volt. Fifteen hundred amp hertz battery that you could go in a camcorder, I just ordered one off Amazon last week for twenty-six dollars. If everything is changing, when it was five years ago, that much money, now it isn't, because this is not the technology everybody's using. Ideally, the easiest thing for us to have done and the least expensive. Would, would have been for us to be able to purchase a uh cell. Um, compatible tablet that we could app-enabled, load the software onto. The app onto to read it with the command link. The problem is that the systems that we're using, our workstations are not wifi-compatible and they need to download the information. That way, so we're, I mean, we could have bought a tablet for about six hundred bucks. Instead, we'd still need a new comlink though.
Well, sorry, short, I mean, just a bit.
We need new stuff. Just trying to give you guys a backstory.
Ways around it.
Yeah.
We have that.
It's very frustrating, because what I know and what Mike knows, we're trying to put everything together and like he'll take a brand-new. Meter and a radio and put it together and then bring the handheld and try to get them to pair and they won't pair, so we'll never get that reading. If we can't get that system software to match up, we're working with old and new.
And if I heard you write this whole system will be compatible with all the new stuff we put in as well as backwards.
Backwards compatible, that was the question I had for chat, yes.
The remainder of the life of the existing radio.
That's correct.
Until they crap out.
Until they crap out, yeah.
All of them.
Correct.
At a technical term?
Yeah. It is, yeah. Until those ones die, yes, and um it's nice, because. Proprietarily, Census has pretty much, you know. Everything, when all the first started coming out, but newer, other vendors, newer technology. They've been able to put out other types of handhelds and um to get them to work with all the census meters. So it's kinda nice, we waited a little bit longer, cause the city of Castle Lake has. The sixty-five hundred and the fifty-five hundred in there and they replaced that one eight years ago and they still spent seven thousand dollars on it. And if all we're ever gonna need it for is to read meters, this will suffice, we don't need to do the G I S. Um, uh, information for Mike, cause he can do that right on his work form there out.
I know.
It is time to update.
So we get a real technology.
Yep. On, I, so.
How many, how many more do we have to purchase? The, how many?
Radios?
Radios, meters need to be.
The whole town, if you're talking at some point, yeah, we'll be, we'll be working.
Every ten years, they all have to be replaced.
We'll be working on rotating them.
They put them all in.
At the same time.
At the same time.
Yes. But depending upon volume and what it reads.
Yeah, for some reason.
They're not all dying at the same time.
For some reason it was farmed out, it wasn't down in house, I don't know why, but. What was it, Mendix at the time?
Yeah, it was.
Was hired to put them all in.
All in oh nine.
So they all got put in a, a pretty close span and then you can tell which ones. You know, the, the high flow, all pretty much went out.
The big ones.
Almost.
At the same time. Yep.
And the residential ones won't be very far behind. You know, they're, they're not quite. I don't know what it is about those units.
Why they're lasting longer?
But again, it's, it's two different radios that we're talking here, the internal radios. I mean, those are on non-stop, that's how that reads, it's, it's a, a tridity type of deal. Whereas the other is a mechanical read and then it comes off of that to the battery when it's requested. So I'm guessing the, the wall mount radios are gonna last a bit longer. Even though they have a ten-year, I think that just kinda covers them on their battery.
Is there like an accuracy rating on these? Like within so much?
Of what? Oh.
Well, that's, that's your meter itself.
Yeah.
That really doesn't have anything to do with the rate of radio, no, no. As, as meters get older, um, they do. Tend to read less. You know, they get less accurate over the years, but we're talking many, many, many years. To really notice anything substantial. Lots of years, I mean, if you're thinking about replacing a meter every ten years, no.
And we'll be taking the. Five thousand from.
It'll come out, it'll be split evenly between water and wastewater.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm gonna be ordering this, so that we're not behind the eight ball or fall too far behind. Cause I don't know how much longer, how many more months I'm gonna. Get the software to keep going. Or the battery life, to get anyone. Cause it usually takes you what, maybe about an hour and a half to go around town and get the readings?
When we get it good.
Yeah, and you don't have it click out on you.
To be four hours or whatever, yeah.
Right. I mean, I can pull the radius of downtown, I can pull a, probably a dozen or two dozen ra- uh. Um, meter readings from their radios, just from City Hall right now.
Who's probably mine?
Ah, very possibly, yeah, it's about a block radius, I can't get down to Napa, I don't think. But yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah. Ideally, what we'd really love to do is stick a access point on somewhere in town, like on the water tower. And then all we'd have to do is push one button and we can get the whole town.
Someday.
One of these days, the technology's out there.
Well, I'm sure it is.
Yep.
I just bought a new cellphone, I can't believe how much. Stuff didn't come from my old phone, this phone. But. So another question for you.
Yeah.
These are camcorders.
Isn't that funny? Yeah. Crazy. Even mine, that battery is not a good.
So when, the battery is only twenty dollars.
Twenty-six.
Go, go ahead, Ron, I, I'll.
When the uh, when the radio units fail now, your, your people put in the north. And then what do, what does like a residential radio replacement go for?
Oh, I'd have to look at the sheet on Corin, I, I got too many things in my head to keep that memorized on.
But I mean, it's not like five hundred, six hundred, something like that.
No.
No, not for residents.
I wanna say that for the radio itself is. Oh, around that sixty-dollar mark or so each, something like that. Somewhere like that, cause I think the meter is two and a quarter, something like that.
The resident is responsible for the meter.
The meter, the radio of us.
Anyway, so.
Right.
I look forward to seeing that.
Okay. Maybe you will. Nothing. Let's remember my desk.
I'm not worried about seeing that.
Okay.
Just the paperwork.
Oh, okay.
We'll vote on it and say, yeah, go do it.
Okay. It'll be in your consent memo.
So we won't.
Oh, I get one, oh, I do get one, I don't have to be on a waiting list for five months.
Well, we can still put you down.
You know what, we'll be calling you or estimating you and you don't want that, trust me. I know, and then when you actually get your real bill, then you'll be calling me. And it'll be wrong. I highly doubt anybody will have a credit, hard to estimate everybody. And the people, jobs, washer dryer, dishwasher, all of them. Dryer, no one.
I have one thing.
Yes, sir.
Somebody asked me. Downtown businesses are supposed to take care of their own sidewalks, right? So the city of Black, that belongs to lots, lots next door here. How come the sidewalks aren't being shovelled?
I've done it, Paige has done it, Kristen's done it.
Um, I don't know, maybe it's kind of, they asked me that the overnight at wrestling and I said, well, I think they're shovelled. And I.
They're being done.
I, I said, I, that's all I said to them, I think they're being shovelled.
Mitchell's, Mitchell's gone all the way down this block before and.
They're being done.
They're being done.
You know, I don't.
Yeah.
I just, that's all I said to them. So, so if luckily they ask me again, I'm gonna say, well, we should drive by there more.
I know, but no disrespect, I, I like it how Target is on the city instead of other. Um, home and property owners that aren't doing their own. So.
There's lots of sidewalk.
There's a lot of that, that is not.
By a lot of um homes that the city doesn't own, that is, that is not our sidewalk. Um, those are technically required to be clear of snow. And I guarantee you eighty percent of them in this town aren't. The other thing is that our snow policy doesn't trigger until we have two inches of snow. So when we get a dusting and we're doing other things, the last thing that anyone's gonna do. Is run to this lot over here with a broom or a shovel for about eight inches of snow.
Ow.
But I, my understanding is all property owners are responsible for the sidewalk in front of their absolutely business or residence.
You're one hundred percent accurate.
Yeah, cause I see a lot of residents. And we try to do, we try to do what we can um in areas that.
High traffic.
Are high traffic and we know. Dance around this, um, in, in an area that perhaps a, a business owner or a homeowner is not taken care of. Um, that we know. Again, that's gonna be high traffic, whether it be for kids coming out of the school or, you know, people in places, you know, to get from one part of our town to the other. However, we're not going around and doing everybody's sidewalk or their driveway, if that matters, I might as well throw that right in there too.
Yep.
The homeowner is responsible for their snow. Your folks do an excellent job about not plowing homeowners in as well. So we're just not even gonna touch on that one.
Please provide, perhaps.
That's a comment that we just stay away from.
No, no, I mean, you are.
I know, I was just telling you that. There was one other thing I wanted to talk about before we, we're asking a motion to adjourn, and that is. That absences. And I'm not trying to throw people under the bus on this, I'm just letting you know that there is a statute and there's a requirement that states that we have to. You know, we're here, it's kinda up to us whether or not somebody remains on the city council for. For the amount of happens in school, but I just wanna make that statement. That we're kind of responsible for setting our own limits, you know, but.
I can.
I've got your number.
It's just, we need to make sure that we're here to operate, which requires us all to be present, there's nothing. We all have reasons why we can't make new things, we just. I need to make sure that we can be careless as many as we humanly possible can, for the quorum. We all have lives and they usually come before everything else, that's understood. No matter who it is.
And like I said, I'm not throwing them.
We would rather.
Two years I've been here.
And, yeah, and, you know, and we also removed councilor before.
That was a little one step.
That was.
That was the first time we'd actually ever declared that as, as necessary. Everybody in the past used to say there used to be a, a rule and I'm like, well, there's no real rule. There is a statute that provides anti-governing entities to remove an elected official for. Excessive absence in an emergency situation to replace them, that's why, um.
And it basically.
Sheldon was, Sheldon owner moved because he had health options, health issues and he couldn't come back. And instead of forcing him to resign, we had the opportunity to fill the, fill the spot. That's understandable, those kinds of things happen, we just need to make sure that we can continue to operate. And if you guys don't hold each other accountable, then that's what we need to do. Just so that we can all be here. I would prefer, you know, if there are things that are happening where it's like, I gotta miss two meetings or whatever it be. Just make sure that you guys will follow one another, not like, wait, where's Dawn? Wait, where's Dawn? You know, I realize, I try really hard. I try really hard to give you guys as, as further um. Amount of a heads up as to what meetings are, unless it's a committee meeting that has to happen. And I hope that that would be enough mindset to plan ahead to be able to account for that, and if it isn't, then just. You know, let us all know.
And my concern is that everybody's here, you're, we're all getting the information, so that when it is time to vote on items. Everybody's on the same page, we all know what we're voting on, we're not just nodding our heads.
All you all get to be here, so you can actually participate in that vote too. I mean, if, if Max, what you say at the house is being faster than the Senate, then. You know, that whole state of emergency that gives us the opportunity to have soon meetings, if we don't have a forum. You may go away now that there is no state of emergency anymore. But I mean, all of twenty-two, we only had to do that twice, because if we didn't, we didn't have a quorum.
Yeah, they're saying the potential would be three meetings and we need a medical.
I think we're just too small of a town to have really nitpick that to that, you know what I mean?
We don't have to nitpick it, so somebody watching us. Three altogether.
Three altogether, I think is how it's being written.
But.
Honestly, I, and it's, and it's more on a global standpoint, I know that. Um, the state and the feds are trying to get more of their legislature legislators. Back inside the Capitol to do their business. Now that there's a lot of businesses that are saying, no, you can't remote work anymore, you need to come back or. Yes, you can hybrid, but you must be present at blah, 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 on a time, it's there because. There's a percentage of people that are probably taking advantage of it.
I, I.
And some places can't operate without you being present.
I think they should be back in session, I think they should have, if they're getting paid, just my personal opinion. All them people that were given the go is they, they, they're getting paid, they should have to be there. They should have to be on the floor.
Yeah, in order to vote.
Well, they should have to be on the, they should have to go through all this stuff and be through all these committees and they should have to go through this stuff, because. If they're at their home, sitting in their home. If they're at their home, sitting in their home, getting paid all this big money to do all this stuff and then. These Zoom meetings should have, they should go away, or even if they're even doing Zoom.
Then I think the thing that I heard is they don't want people avoiding that.
And then they're having, they're having their underlings do the work for them. That new video work and they're just getting griefed on all this stuff, that shouldn't have to be the way it should be. They should have to be there for this stuff. State and federal. And that's like here.
You should run, you're staying, that should be your platform, we'll show up.
I'm here, that's your platform, I'll be present.
I think this, they're, I think it all, even this cold.
Anybody else?
All right, we'll second that motion. All favor.
Thanks, Nick. Out, 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 oh, Christ. I threw my back out this weekend. And sitting in the not easy week and I just. Oh shoot, that's gonna be on the recording.